Okay, Mayor, ready on my end?
Ready? I'll call this work session of the Christiansburg Town Council, purpose of the budget to order. We will have a discussion by Mayor and Council. We also gonna, we're gonna have an end of a presentation from Mr. Wingfield and Ms. Mrs. Tweedy on the budget as they have presented within the last two days. I think you'll find that there is some significant work that has been done to it. Again, I ask that we reserve all questions to be able to let them get through this presentation. And again, I assure all of you, you will have time, you will have ample time to talk after this presentation. Thank you.
Just like start by thanking Val for all her hard work on the budget and also all the department heads. So lots going into this. It's definitely a pared down budget from what you had previously, even more so. And I'm gonna begin with a PowerPoint. Okay. Uh, basically, current and proposed budget and continuity of government. Uh, purpose and of the continuity and its relation to the budget. The town, of course, is under a declaration of emergency and we will need resources to respond as well as to provide adequate level of essential services. Right now, Chief Hanks, our Fire Chief, is serving in this role as Emergency Services Coordinator on a full-time basis. A town manager and myself and Val Tweedy, the Finance Director, has prepared this budget to believe it be a potential worst-case scenario in terms of revenue. We've therefore been very conservative with expenditures. We recognize the likely need similar to all localities for a budget amendment in late summer, early fall, once the reality of the COVID-19 impacts are better understood. I'm gonna give you a little overview of what town staff has been doing. And I'm gonna start Emergency Services, of course, Christiansburg Police, Fire Department, Rescue Squad have all been very involved in the emergency response, including staffing and test sites. And of course, they're continuing to perform their daily operations. Staff from Public Relations has been very active in keeping the public informed and assisting administration with messaging and both emergency response and liaison relations with the New Valley Health District, the Newer Valley Regional Commission, Montgomery County, the town of Blacksburg, and many others. And it's nice to have such good partners in a situation like this. I know we are, to some degree, of course, conferring and trying to make decisions jointly in relations to Parks and Rec, things like that. And I think you've seen that with basically some of our joint press releases. Finance is still taking water tax and many other payments in a drop box by mail and over the phone. They're processing invoices for payments, preparing reports and recording transactions. They're preparing all water and tax bills and they're compiling the budget documents, including projections. And of course, Val has been very involved and extremely involved in budget preparation and preparation of this meeting. Town's been using Zoom and transferring phones. And of course, a lot of employees have transitioned to working from home. So of course, information technology has been very busy in assisting with these functions. Construction has been deemed essential by the governor. Therefore, the town must still provide review of plans and inspections. So therefore, engineering, planning, and building inspections are still working, although they have transitioned to working remotely as much as possible. I'll give you, I guess, an example. We're still doing technical review committee meetings of site plans, although we're doing those via Zoom like we're meeting now. And that actually is working pretty well. Public Works is split into two work shifts and will remain separate as a precaution to keep water, sewer, and garbage crew service to residents and businesses. We're doing similar such measures in Emergency Services and other departments as practical. And I'll point out that spring cleanup is still planned. Parks and Recreation has disinfected equipment and continued to assist with cleaning at the Emergency Services building. They're doing maintenance of the Huckleberry Trail, including mowing and disinfecting benches. They're maintaining other facilities and make weekly calls to seniors and people who are on cart assistance, just basically well-being checks. Which I think are greatly appreciated. The Aquatic Center staff has performed annual maintenance. That includes shutting down the aquatics for the, what's normally the August shutdown. They've been disinfecting Emergency Services buildings with Parks and Recreation staff. Like I say, they had basically filled and drained the pool. You have to have the pool full, though. If you leave it set, it will crack. So we must maintain a water level in the pool. Human Resources has been very active with researching state and federal mandates in regards to the emergency response, drafting policies in regards to it, and basically making sure that safety precautions are taken for the community. Employ it and give you some examples. Many employee spouses are considered essential at their jobs, in addition to our employees, such as nurses, doctors, emergency responders, and they may need the town employee spouse to watch their children. Other spouses are now unemployed and may need resources. So Human Resources has been very active in keeping our staff informed. Those are just some of the examples of how government, how, why the government functions are essential and how we'll continue to provide services across all departments. Some of the things I have in mind going forward, I still plan on using Parks and Rec staff to clean facilities with aquatic staff. Something I thought of, I know it's been mentioned of using a community part of future Emergency Services lot on Runnix Street for a community garden. I'd like to maybe expand that a little further and add a community tilling program and have Parks and Rec actually go out there and till it. We have two prior approved community garden locations, ones at Walnut Creek and the other one's on Warren Street. I'm gonna ask Parks and Rec to till those areas. The community tilling program, though, I wanna go beyond those locations and I want to open that up to potentially not any nonprofits in town. If a church has a location that they wanna wanna garden till, I'd offer basically Parks and Rec staff and a tiller to do it. Just help have people fed. It's kind of a small, I think, token to the community to, like I say, let them know that we understand their needs. Like I say, I think limiting nonprofit still keeps it manageable.
Randy, I'm sorry to stop you right there. Why not extend the, the help not to just churches, but what about if you were to do that with local businesses as well?
That can be a council discussion, but like I say, right, right now, I plan to do it on nonprofits. We don't, aren't gonna take any action at this meeting, so basically, we can have that at a future council meeting discussion, or if you'd wanna discuss it later in the presentation. Spring cleanup, I expect it to be a major undertaking, as so many people have been cleaning out garages, basements, trimming bushes, trees. And I plan on using building inspections and Parks and Rec staff to assist in that. And I actually have been planning on participating myself. If nothing else, let Public Works know that I consider it safe to be doing that. Like I say, just support them.
Well, and also too, you know, I, I see that the find, the finding signs are being put up. Is that something that Public Works couldn't do it? And our people from the Reds Department and other places could do that job?
They, they are gonna be doing it. It, it's a big effort to do the spring cleanup. It normally takes multiple weeks, really beyond the two weeks that we advertise.
No, I was talking about the way fine sign.
Ms. X, please allow us to finish this conversation. We have plenty of time before the budget's approved to complete this thing.
Well, this is not part of the budget.
Thank you.
Of course, as you know, police, fire, and rescue will continue to do their jobs, as will Public Works, and we need that more than ever now. Just let you know, the town has a job to do and we will continue to get it done. In regards to the current fiscal year budget, we've projected meals and lodging revenue for March for 25%, sorry, 50% for March and 25% for April through June, remainder of the year. Sales tax revenues have been reduced by same percentages. We decreased aquatics and parks and recreation revenue to zero for the remainder of the year. We've instructed directors to expend funds only on essential items. If it's not required to maintain operations, then we're not spending. Directors submitted reductions to their estimated expenditures for this year and the fund balance will move forward to next year's fiscal, fiscal budget. We did leave items such as committed contracts and grant, and grant matches for projects in the budget. Basically, we consider those more or less commitments. The proposed budget, and of course, Val's been very involved in this, but I wanna point out first and foremost that the park has been removed from the draft budget. Water and water rate increases of the dollar minimum and the dollar per thousand increase have also been removed. We postponed several capital projects for this, basically to accommodate it. The water, and I wanna just state water and sewer enterprise funds, and it would be illegal to use these funds for any other uses, including the park, again, which is not included. Our water rates will increase from the Water Authority. We will have need for wastewater treatment plants ourself. We've got existing water and sewer systems to maintain. So, you know, we may want to consider adding this back as a future amendment. But again, we consider that in the fall. Projected meals tax at 25% and lodging tax also 25% for July, August, and September, and we projected 50% October. Then basically proceed to normalcy hopefully in November. Again, we'll evaluate that in the fall. I think Val agrees with those projections and, you know, it is a little bit of a guess at this point, obviously, but we have decreased Parks and Rec revenue to reflect closings earlier and early in the year, and we've rescheduled and ramp up new events for the remainder of the year. But we have a need to do that. We'll basically look at that as we move along. We've removed non-essential purchases from the, such as the aquatic signage, vehicles, leaf machines, and other capital items. Though, if they're needed later and not impaired with the budget, we may wanna reconsider those in the future. We left items such as committed contracts and prior grant match projects in next year's budget as well. Proposed budget, we have 285,000 in wages and 110 for fringe for town employee pay increases. These would largely be to Public Works. We've targeted those to lower-paid employees. I just wanna point out the Public Works turnover's been 35% over the last 18 months, which is very high. There's a 2% mayor allocation. It's 200,000 with 77,000 fringe included in the draft, and I just feel a strong commitment towards rewarding, rewarding high performance. The 1.8% multiplier for Emergency Services is included in this draft. That was not in the prior draft. I just think the current situation is a good reason why I think it's warranted. These people are on the front lines putting their lives at risk, whether it's from infectious disease, entering a burning building, apprehending a suspect, or responding to a domestic dispute. We recommend that these above employee compensation items would not incur until October and would require Town Council affirmative action prior to staff allocation. Though, we are trying to verify that the 1.85% multiplier, whether it would be needed to be committed before July 1st. I don't know whether they'd allow you to jump in the middle of a fiscal year. We do have an email into Virginia Retirement System just to verify that. We should know that within the week. Capital items, and these are items that I call them no time like the present, and that's the reason I included them in the budget. I did include the $120,000 for the bathroom remodel at the Recreation Center. That is because it's gonna cause much less disruption to the rec center if the bathrooms are closed while the, while the rec center's closed. Did include 90,714 for the aquatics lighting, change to LED lighting. Of course, we will reopen the rec, the Aquatic Center one day, and having this done would be much safer and much less disruptive if it's done while the Aquatic Center's closed. And I'll just also point out that this project would also save on our electric bill for the Aquatic Center. Did include chiller and condenser units for the Recreation Center, and that's 260,540. We reduced field level improvements, although there's still some money in there for that. These are some things, like I say, I think there may be not necessarily 100% necessary, but I think it makes sense to have some work done while these facilities are closed. Several capital projects are already underway and deemed essential to maintaining ongoing services to residents. I've sent you a capital project summary, summary earlier, and it basically details some of the items that we're recommending be delayed. And the delay of these items would be in the form of a budget amendment. Val, if you'd want to cover some of these items?
Sure. If you look at the summary that I sent last night with the capital items, you'll see over in the right-hand column the projects that we would come back to you in, in September, October, and look at adding back to the budget depending on what the economic status was. So on that capitalist, it kinda shows you in that far column which ones, but this is a summary here. We'd add back $800,000 in paving, the aquatics LED sign, 427,000 for the Betty Drive realignment, 120,000 for a traffic signal study, and then there's three different projects for sidewalks along North and South Franklin. Some just sidewalks, some with curb and gutter, and the Cambria Trail design for 339,000. And I think there's more on the next page, Randy.
I'll point out that we do have 200,000 in the current draft of the budget for paving. That's just kind of a minimum level that I thought was necessary. Normally, we do approximately a million dollars of paving, but I do think it's a good time to do the paving. So we might wanna reconsider that in the fall.
Yeah, there's actually, there's 1.4 million in the budget for paving. 1.2 of that is all B.D.A. funded. So there's only $200,000 of general fund money going toward paving, and normally, that would be a million dollars. So some of the other items were postponing the basic pump station upgrade, Craig, Craig Mountain, 120,000 for Cambria water improvements, water line improvements for Montague and Almeta, emergency generator at Walnut Pump Station, rebuilding a blower motor at the wastewater treatment plant, 72,500 for Stone Street drainage improvements, and there's several culverts that need to be replaced, both at Flager and on North Franklin, for 150,000. And we would also come back and reconsider the water increase for later in the year.
Again, I'll point out the, the items on this sheet and the prior sheet are not included in the budget, although we would want to potentially reconsider those in the late summer, early fall with potential budget amendment. And I do think they're all good, worthy projects.
The community support, I sent out a new tally sheet late this afternoon. I received two additional tally sheets in late today with changes that I wanted to incorporate into it, and it dropped our numbers by almost $100,000. So this is what the tally sheet currently reflects. However, what's in the budget draft that I sent out last night is really the 232,000. So that would take 100,000 out of the expenditures of the budget that you currently have in that draft. So this is the way the vote came out. And I guess a little later on this evening, we'll have further discussion about that, but this is kinda where we are right at the present moment.
Give you just a minute to look at it. I'll move on. But I will email you this PowerPoint, if you'd like, after the meeting. Next year's budget. Assigned reserves.
Yeah, you want me to go over this, Randy?
Sure.
Okay. So we are, even in this draft, continuing to put some funds aside in to the assigned reserves for our long-term projects. We did add to this for the retaining wall program. We've had this in the budget the last couple of years. Engineering is still working on a program and evaluating inventory. So rather than putting it in the budget this year, we decided that it might be more appropriate to just put some funds aside in a reserve so that when we're either have projects or we're ready to kick those projects off, that they would be, we would have some funding to move forward with that. We don't really know what those costs will be right now, so the way of kind of funding for what we know is, is out there. So that's what would be in assigned. And we'll explain a couple of numbers on here look a little weird. The fire reserve, the estimated at 2020, there's actually more funds in there than what shows right now for June 20th, but that was the expected based on the fire engine coming in. So is, those funds will end up getting depleted with by the June 20, 30th of 2021 for the purchase of that new ladder truck. Also, the recreational reserve actually currently at this moment has 2,117,000 in it, but we have expended about a million dollars of that on the design work that's being done relative to the park. So the expected balance in that at the end of the year after the reduction for the million would be a million 367. The rest of them, I think, look relatively normal and the math makes sense. The software reserve, we are looking at moving ahead with at least partially that software project, which with everything going on, we haven't had adequate time to really address, but that is included at the budget at this time. As you know, part of the movement behind this was the one piece of software we have that we really need to update and, and move forward on getting something new that is a little more operational, so.
Valerie, I'm sorry to interrupt you right here, but you said that the recreational reserve, that money is to be used for the park?
Yes.
And why are we still having that amount in there for this year?
This is just assigning reserves. It's not really money to be expended. It's just putting money into savings for that in the future.
So we're putting money in the future and they're saving it right now instead of freezing up the water bills when we are in, in the middle of a pandemic where people need the help right now, they won't be able to pay their bills. So we're putting money on the side, we're saving money out of the taxpayers' money, but yeah, we are wanting to increase their water bills.
Let me go back a couple of slides.
Yeah, as we mentioned, we have taken the water increase out of this year's budget for the 2021 with council to reconsider that or possibly reconsider that in the fall.
It is illegal to use water and sewer funds for anything other than water and sewer because it's an enterprise fund. It's, it's illegal. So we cannot use water and sewer funds for the park, period.
I know, but we're, we're reserves. We can use reserves money with Town Council approval for water or whatever else we need to fix in the town, correct?
If that's, if council would like to subsidize water and sewer from general fund, they could.
Okay, okay. Well, I hope that you guys are thinking about that and sleeping over that one because people are not able to afford to pay bills right now. Thank you. You can go right ahead, Valerie. Thank you.
Okay. Randy, you wanna move to the next slide, I think? So that's our assigned reserves are at nine point, expected 96 million at the end of FY '21. It's a net decrease after additions of 372,000 due to large part the purchase of the fire truck and use of the software reserve and expenditures on the park to date. The projected unassigned reserves, given the draft that we sent out last night, would be 15,696 and some change. That's 41.86%, which is well above our adopted policy of between 30 and 40. So this budget is presented to you as a 4.7 and the cuts that we've made, the reductions in revenue, and all of that still would leave us with an unassigned reserves at about 15.6, 15.7. So we're still a little over that 40% mark, but I think given that we don't really know full implications at this point of COVID-19 and all of this, that that's probably a safe place to stay right now. So the total budget has expenditures of 49.6 million dollars. Operating expenses are 38.8 million dollars and 10.8 million dollars in capital. This is a 16.2 million dollar decrease over last year's budget. There's a fair amount of that, that's some very big projects, but for the most part, this is just a really, really big cut in our operational budgets due to operational revenues that we expect to severely decline. As I talked about last week, our meals and lodging and sales tax makes up about 15% a little better of our budget. So that takes a huge hit on what we're able to do and not able to do going forward.
So here, looking at this budget right now, total assigned reserves are 9.6 million. Is that, is that including the 1 million, almost a million dollars that you saved up from, that you're putting away for the park, or is that something else? The total assigned reserves that you see right there, that's money that we have saved up, right, right now, correct?
Correct.
So while we're saving money, the rest of the town is just falling apart.
Please allow us to finish. We, I can assure you.
Well, I am very concerned with this water increases for the rest of the year, Mr. Barber.
Well, let us get through the budget and we'll get a response from all council on this. Thank you very much. Please continue, Val.
All right. I think the next slide's Randy.
Fiscal year budget amendments, much of the reasoning is included, but questions are welcome. If council disagrees with anything presented, please have these discussions. That's why you're elected. Again, Treasurer Finance Director Val Tweedy, and I believe these are reasonable forecasts for revenue despite the trying times. We believe we must maintain some level of work programs, and the day will come when we'll open facilities again. Also, we feel the amount of reserves is more than adequate and may even be tapped if needed. Like I say, we're not really doing that with the budget, per se, but in the future, if, if it is not needed, there will be just in that much of a stronger position, financial position on the other side of this. And it never hurts to have a strong reserve fund for situations such as this and for the continuity of government. And just, I would like to state, these are not easy decisions to make, and staff will respect your decisions. Please respect each other's decisions as the budget is yours as a body, not individually. And I'll just let you know tentative budget work schedule going forward. Of course, we have the work session currently, we have another work session tentatively scheduled for April 21st. I got a feeling we may need it, but, and, and again, May 5th if needed. We were tentatively having the public hearing for water increases, and again, they're not included in the budget, so we wouldn't have to have the public hearing for it if it's not needed. But that is tentatively scheduled for May 12th, and the first hearing for the budget is May 12th. Of course, they do take the, if we do pursue water increases, then that would be a 21-day notice. The notice for the public hearing for the budget's only a seven-day notice, legal notice. We would have a set final budget hopefully by the end of May and hopefully approve the budget early June. And just let you know, we're all in this together, and that's how we're gonna get through it. I know, I know it's a scary time for everybody, but like I say, we will get through to the other side of this and hopefully, you know, everything will be fine. Like, again, I know it's a lot to deal with, but I do think we have a fairly pared-down budget. So just basically open it up to council for discussion.
Thank you, Randy. I'm, I'm going to call on council individually, I'd ask in an email. I'm going to call on council individually, I'd ask in an email for five minutes. If you can stay that, that's fine. We can always come back through for a line of other questions. I'm going to start by council seniority, so I'm going to start with Mr. Showalter.
I'm sorry, I'm confused about what you just said.
I said that I'm going to call on the council members individually.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to start with the seniority by council, which is Mr. Showalter.
Okay, I'm here, Mike.
Okay, Henry, what you got?
What I got from what we just saw, can we go back up all the way to the beginning, Randy? Okay, and then just go to the next page. Hold it right there, okay? Real quick, Mike, I do agree with freezing the water rates at this time and just eliminating those capital projects as long as we can do it. So that that would be for me, so I don't, you know, seeing how council, you know, not necessarily votes tonight, but I do agree with freezing those water increases going forward. So let's go to the next page, next page, next page, next page. Next page. So that's where that is, next page. Just my personal opinion on the increases. You know, I think that's something I would like to see tabled and and we could do a budget amendment at the, you know, during the first quarter, at the end of the first quarter, I think they're going, but that's just my opinion. I do think that, you know, we have over the years wanted to increase wages for those town employees like we've done for the police department in the past and other pivotal roles through the payroll, you know, the payroll, you know, increases. But I would like to see this, you know, we are, we do have employees employed. There's a lot of people out there who aren't employed and that's just my personal opinion. I do, I would want to revisit this, I just don't want to include it in the budget. Then it just automatically occur without council, without a council formal review on that, but that's just my opinion. I think our employees are great, but the one thing we have done, we've kept them employed, we've kept the paychecks coming in, their retirement and their health insurance coming in as well. And until we actually see the daylight at the end of this event, which should be in the first quarter. If everything goes as what's being mentioned out there, I would like to revisit this, but with a budget amendment, just like with the other item. So let's go to the next page. Randy, I think those are good ideas with these facilities shut down to get these improvements done before we open them back up. So initially, just seeing this right here, I would agree with this. Next. Same thing here, I would like to find out a little bit more about the paving. If 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 the asphalt is cheap and there are needs that we've put off over the years that we could, you know, include in there, maybe include a couple more streets. But again, I'll leave it to staff. If this is enough for us to maintain our our paving program, I'm good with it. And it looks like a lot of these improvements, like pedestrian improvements and things of that nature. You know, those are things that, you know, we've had on the drawing board, so to speak, for a while. So next. These as well. If you can go on, I don't have a problem with these. And of course, the community support, that's what we all voted on. So I respect what the majority puts in there. Next. The reserves, of course, we we identified these in the past, in past years to continue to put funds to help us, you know, pay for these projects or capital improvements. So I think we should continue to move forward with these. Next, sorry. And Val, it seems like we are on the high end of our unassigned reserve policy, but that's where we want to be. Again, you know, for me personally, I think I think the projection for us coming out of this is good as a nation and, you know, as a town with COVID-19. But it's always good to have some reserves put in there in case it's needed in the future. So we can get there. Next. Okay, next. And I don't have a problem with the meeting dates. Now would hopefully council will weigh in tonight about the public hearing for the water increase. So we just go ahead and eliminate that, but the dates look fine to me. What's after this one? Okay, Mike, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Stipes.
Okay. Are we here? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you? All right, great. That was a great presentation and Randy and Val, a lot of hard work going in, it's obvious. And you've hit the nail on the head on several things, I think. I won't go back through the presentation, even though that was a great idea, Henry. I think the the water increase, freezing the water increase, certainly in favor of that, even though that is something we will have to subsidize. But I think it's a very good gesture to our citizens to let them know that we're concerned about their plight as we all are because we're citizens as well, but I think that's a nice gesture. And I would hope that if council agrees that we would get that out there as a as a big positive because it is going to be a cost to us. And I think the number was about a half a million on that, if that's correct, Val, is that about right, about a half million?
Yeah, it's actually just under $600,000.
So that is a pretty big cost that we're going to be incurring, but that's, I think that the citizens will appreciate that. So I appreciate you all working into the budget. If you go down, I call them asks as far as going down to the increases that we're talking about as far as our personnel goes. I look at the expenditures that we're incurring, right, or what we're looking at, a lot like we do our family budgets. And that is if if there's a lot of financial uncertainty, the first thing that we should do, we do it at home is to control discretionary spending, which is wants rather than needs. And speaking as one council member, I I'll make a commitment that entering in or even mentioning layoffs or anything like this to help us deal with this is not something I'm interested in doing. I think our employees can count on us or one council member. I think it's important for them to know that they're appreciated and that there's no danger of us having layoffs as a result of what we're dealing with right now. As Randy said, we will come through this. But as far as the asks go, Mr. Showalter said, to revisit this, I certainly agree on all three accounts. The three asks are the employee compensation package, the merit increases and the 1.85%. I think the first quarter, our budget starts in July 1. So the first quarter, the end of the first quarter would be about October. And if if what we're hearing is correct, by then, by that time, we should be able to prognosticate a lot better. We should be able to see, you know, what we're, how this year wraps up and how your projections pan out. And then, of course, what we're looking at for next year. I will say I'll leave a crack in the door for the 2% merit. I'll leave a crack in the door for that. And if it's something anywhere from, you know, something more than zero to 2%, I would consider that. But I really think it's best for us to wait till October. And I know the employees have had performance reviews and they're looking forward, you know, they're counting on that. But I will tell you, in the private sector and throughout, you know, jurisdictional government, people are reeling right now. And so I think it's prudent to wait till October to revisit this as far as the capital programs. Going, so that's my take on that is hold off until October and reconst, you know, restart the conversation again about that. As far as the capital projects go, there's a lot of important projects on there. But I would say the paving is a concern of mine because the $800,000 or we have. Val, could you repeat again, how much of that paving program is actually town dollars?
There's actually in the budget right now, 1.4 million dollars for paving. One point two of that is grant dollars, 200,000 is general fund dollars.
Thank you. Well, I would advise council, or my particular opinion on that is we need to go ahead and do that. We'll get behind the asphalt plants. If we if we table this till October, what happens is the asphalt plants close in November and we're unlikely, there's, there is a lot of construction going on still that's not been shut down. But my only reservation with the capital program is to continue our paving program. We'll never ever get caught up on that ever. No one's ever satisfied with that, but we don't want to get any more behind on that. So on the capital programs, I would recommend to council that we move ahead with that with that capital program. And then I haven't gone through all the the pairing that's going on with the capital, but I'm convinced after listening to the presentation that Randy and Val have sharpened their pencils and we're delaying, we're focusing on needs rather than wants. So those are my overall thoughts on what on where we're at, and that'll be it for me right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stipes. Mr. Huppert? We see you.
Need to unmute.
Unmute.
Can somebody unmute him?
Hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
You can, okay. I would like to just say, I appreciate what what you two have done with this budget and the how you've handled it. I want to say a second here about the Truman Wilson. And I want to say that I support that 100% of us holding off on the Truman Wilson. There's no way we can do it now. But I would like to, we've been looking and working on this for six years, and I hate to see it go down. And so I hope that maybe next fall or next Christmas, we can look into it a little bit. I may be doing some partial thing with maybe an amendment to the budget. And I'm just, if it cannot be done, it can't, but I just want to make sure I put that out so that you realize that council has not completely forgotten about it. I want to go to about the situation with the lights at the aquatic center. You know, we might think that that's an addition that doesn't be need to be made really. But I talked to Terry Caldwell this week, and she said that she was really concerned about the lighting and if it should pop or, you know, malfunction, the effect it could have on the people inside that. So I think that's a very good thing. And I thought it was a very good idea too about the bathroom in in the rec center. And if we can maybe do that while there's nobody in there, it's certainly going to make things a lot easier. The salary increase, I agree with with both of those two people in front of me that I think maybe we can, we can hold off on on that. And I think the situation is, you know, I think most people are pleased that they have a job now and pleased that maybe they're going to have one in the in the near future. Concerning the water increase, it is for the individual person is such a small percentage and it's going to have such an effect on us, I think it's important to to keep that going. So I would not go along with not having that increase. Also, on the community support, I have several comments there. And I'm really unhappy with with some of the things and I, it would maybe be great if we could talk about that and maybe even move around some money a little bit, like the ACE program. You know, we gave 25,000 this year, they want 50 next year. Maybe we could continue to give them the 25 and move that other 25 around to other organizations. And some of these organizations, if we don't pay them, they're they're going to fold up. And I think I have that, that's all I have. And again, I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huppert. Mr. Bishop?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Well, that's kind of, I have it turned off. I might want to scratch my nails or something. But anyway, I agree with freezing the water increase. You know, it's a small amount, but to, the way we're going today, that small amount can make a big difference to a family. So I'm I'm glad the town has decided to freeze that increase for the water. I agree with the city, but the employee merit increase, I'd rather put that off or delay it till October. Because I don't want anyone to think that the town councils are here to terminate anyone. We know a lot of businesses unfortunately have to shut down. The last thing I want to do is lay off any staff members. Now, ask Randy to look into the 1.85 multiplier to see if if it can be delayed till October. Are we need to do it before June, July, please?
I anticipate an answer for Virginia Retirement System this week.
Okay, if you just should email back to us to let us know what we need to do. Another thing that knows we have is what we call, what is it? Funding to replace the walls that's falling down around town. You know, is that in this to be acting on now or in October, Randy?
It would really be a reserve fund in the current draft budget. So so it it would be there like the other reserve funds to be used when needed.
I understand, all right. But because as I say, you ride around town or walk through town, you do see a lot of walls to me that are in really bad shape. So I'm going to put them in the reserves. That way, if we need it before a wall falls on someone, we can pull from it. But otherwise, it'll just be, it'll be sitting there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And basically, I say, I'm pretty pleased with everything, even, yeah, I have some questions about the community grants, but the majority has voted and no, I will go with it. That's all I have, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Sax?
There's actually very little I feel like I can say because I agree a lot with what the other councilman said. But I'll go over it real quick just for clarity. I 100% agree with freezing our water increases. I think that's something we can do to help each citizen. I think it is smart to do some of our projects, a lot of businesses are building to close, more student, more economical. So as I questioned at one point, some of the projects that were still going on, I understand that that's the reason that we're still in there. And I can appreciate that. And I totally agree with paving, now is the time to pave as much as we possibly can and support that. I do support also saving the 180,000 in reserve. Put that down, I want to make sure I address everything. Oh, as far as the increase in merit, I feel like right now we're in such turmoil that I I can't approve for a 2% COLA or any way. any wage increases at this point. Right now, I think people are lucky to have to have any job. And we need to be as fair as we can to everybody. So right now, I put a freeze on that. That community support, you know, granted, we all vote. That's why the process is what we have. And I accept it as is because that was everyone's vote. And I believe I hit every every hot topic I vote. Done, Mike. Thank you.
Are you done? Okay, Ms. Hicks?
Let me see, can you hear me? Can you go back to the very beginning? So I guess we're not going to be looking at the whole budget. We're just going to look at this right now?
You can discuss anything with the budget.
Okay, well, let's just start with what you have right now, then we'll hit some things in the budget. Move on to the next page, please. Okay, go next page. Okay. Now, next page, the one about we are, go ahead, keep going. I'll tell you when. I think I go back to that one. Okay. Right now, I think we're still got too much money going in there for the that that is in the budget that we're thinking that we're going to have. I don't think we're going to have that much money. I don't think there will be that much taxes collected from apparel purchases. I think that has to be removed. I think let's go to the next page. Okay, I I do want to make sure that we do freeze the water. I would like to have the support of the rest of town council members as I'm hearing as well, some of them. We do want the water to be, the water increases to be frozen. That would be really good for our community right now. And
That's not included currently.
What?
That's not included in the budget currently.
It's not included, but it's included for later in the year.
Well, it could be a potential budget amendment item, but it's not included in the current budget.
All right. So right there, he says right there, but you can use funds to fund for water and sewer. And general funds can be added to supplement necessities here. So the reserves from the reg will be used for the pipe upgrades. Is that correct?
If that's town council's wishes to use general fund dollars for water and sewer, you can.
Okay, well, that's something that's also supposed to be, we should have that on the I guess we can have the public support on that and maybe as the public and see what they want, where they want the reserves money to be used, if they want to park later on. Or if they actually want to use it to fix the necessities right now, which is not the ones right now, but the means. Now, okay. All right. Keep going on that. Okay, right there. I do think that our employees should just be happy right now that they have a job. A lot of the people that ran from us and everything, they have lost their jobs. And I do think that this, maybe we can look at this in the future, but right now, not even doctors are getting braces right now or nurses that I know of. So and even the one point eight eighty five multiplier, I I don't think that we we need to be thinking about those things right now. Go go on to the net. Well, and that doesn't mean that we're grateful for all the work that our employees are doing because we respect them and we know that they are doing a lot of work right now. All right, the hundred and twenty five thousand dollars bathroom and at the rec center. Why is it costing so much money to remodel those two bathrooms? Can you answer that, Randy?
That's basically what a contractor would charge. They're they're fairly large bathrooms. It's men's and women's bathrooms.
Do you think that that's something that we can have some beatings on and see right now?
That's how we would have to handle it is by by bits.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to the next one. I do think that I also agree on paving as much as we can right now and fixing the roads. So they look we fix the infrastructure. That's really good. The only thing in here is the aquatics LED signage. I think we should look at that and make sure that it's not under this budget. But that's my opinion. I don't think we should be spending money on aquatics LED signage right now. We can move on to the next one. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. The next one?
Joanne, the it's not in the current budget. We would revisit it in the fall.
That one page that you show me? I'm going to go.
These two.
Those two. Okay.
This one and that one.
And how come we are taking some of those? Because you guys don't want to use the reserves to to fix the drainage and is that correct? Is that what you're doing?
These are some of the things that we remove from the budget.
Yeah. And why do you remove these ones out of the budget when you have the money saved up somewhere else?
We have a policy that we maintain between thirty and forty percent of operating unassigned reserve fund.
Okay, but you're saying that we're still making over nine nine million dollars in reserves this year?
If if council would want to reallocate any of the assigned reserves, that's council's decision.
Well, I do think that right now it should be very important for us to fix the infrastructure. So and the money is there to fix it. So, okay.
I think I've heard that the paving should be done from a majority of council. Give you an example, I guess the unassigned fund balance would be at forty, almost forty two percent. I would expect that basically we'd add in the eight hundred thousand for paving. That that'll that'll reduce that unassigned fund balance.
Okay, well, you still have over eight million dollars. And then we have saved up money too on the side for for other things. So I I think it's very important to do as much as we can fixing the roads and everything that we can right now with the money that is provided by the taxpayers to be able to fix their roads because that's what they expect from us. They expect public safety as well as the infrastructure of the of everything in the town. So I do think that we should reconsider fixing some of those things that are in the budget instead of taking them out and use the reserves for some of those. Not the signage, LED signage, but just the north front clean pedestrian improvements and all those pedestrian improvements. I think the more sidewalks that we have in the town, the better. And the the better roads that we have in the town, the better. We can go on to the next page. Yeah, a lot of the stuff can be fixed. Those three projects can be fixed right now during this pandemic as long as, you know, none of our employees get sick. We can keep going to the next one. Okay, now with community support, I am glad that everybody looked at this again to see what the needs are of our community. I do I do ask McKee and New River Community Action to see if they need a help. And obviously, McKee came back and you obviously know that we got asked for another two thousand dollars. I would really, really like for you guys to see if there is anything that we can do with that. And it doesn't have to be from the town's money. It can be our money. I just donated my monthly payment from town council for McKee and I really delivered the check to McKee this week. So I encourage you guys to do something for these organizations that are doing something for our community. And can we, we can go back to the to the next one. Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. Next one? Okay, we can go to the next one, please. Was there any more? I think that was it, right? Is there another page?
Schedule.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with the schedule. And then I had so we're not going to go through the whole budget again. We're just going through the summary, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Now, what about, I was looking under the budget. These things are not there. On their page number five, it talks about the four times four service truck for the waste water company right now. That's seventy six thousand dollars, five hundred thou, seventy six thousand, five hundred dollars in there. Do they need this truck right now?
I think they do.
We did remove quite a few vehicles from what was in there originally. The capital list contains all of the beginning asks. So it was asked for a name in there with either a dollar amount or no dollar amount with it. And we leave them in there until we get to final draft, just so you can kind of see what was asked for, what we've cut out of the budget and and what remains. So you can tell we've cut quite a few vehicles out of there.
Well, right now, the the prices of vehicles are going down. I can possibly think, what is this a very special truck? I mean, it just says four by four service truck.
They're pretty big vehicles. They put plows on the front of them. So they have to be pretty heavy duty vehicles with four wheel drive. And then they put special toolboxes and stuff on them, which is what gets the price up so high.
That's a big number for a truck. And then if I'm looking at page number seven, are we still looking into the business license stocks? I mean, that's a lot of money right there. We're still expecting two million, four hundred thousand dollars out of that. Bank franchise taxes, the motor vehicle taxes, the lodging taxes. I mean, those are still very high numbers that you're saying that we're projecting to get this year. I don't think that we're going to get prepared meal stocks. Do you think that we're still going to get collect five million, almost six million dollars? We got building and zoning fees, court and parking fees. Nobody's going to court right now. Rentals. What is that charge right there? Can you explain that to me really quick?
There's, if you're looking on page seven, that property rentals is recs, parks and recreation rental of their building, aquatics rental of their building and cell tower rents that we receive. And we'll continue to receive those whether we
Okay. So those will not be affected.
But we'll still get our cell tower rents.
And now what about radio shop? What is that thing? Hundred and forty thousand.
Randy, you want to take that?
That is a revenue neutral item that we had in this current budget. Basically, we would potential to have a staff position paid by Montgomery County Sheriff's Department for us to assist in install of their radio systems and things like that. Basically, our radiotech person is fairly skilled at that, and I think they recognize that. They would do this potentially in lieu of using a private contractor. But again, it would be revenue neutral in the budget that if it were done, we wouldn't have an expense ourselves. It'd simply be a reimbursement from from Montgomery County or any of the other emergency services in the county that were to use it.
Okay. It talks about parks, recreation fees and contributions. Do you still think that we're going to make two hundred thousand dollars out of that?
Yeah, I mean, we are looking at, we already have nine months of this year done that we have revenue for. And we would have nine months worth of revenue hopefully in the next year. And and you know, one of those nine months is probably at a reduced level and and some of them will be. But we'll continue to monitor that. And we've, I've looked at products. Unless, I mean, they've already done a lot of refunds. So parks and rec, I may have to take another look at because they're doing some more refunds as to what revenue we've already received this year. So it, you know, some of that analysis slips into next year, but you know, a lot of our fall sporting events and that kind of stuff may or may not happen. And we won't really have a good idea of that for a while yet.
So your year starts in July, June, July, and now you're talking, you're talking about it started June, July, and now it goes until, when does he end? Because this starts on June thirtieth?
Right. So we've reduced our estimated revenues to receive that would contribute to the beginning fund balance going into next because we've reduced those revenues, that would reduce what comes into our beginning of this year. And then we've also revenues in the 2021 budget. Again, those are two that that because of all the refunds, and I don't know exactly what's out there for refunds, we may have to revisit those. But that should end up by June, we'll have refunded everything that we've taken in that we have to refund people. So I need to relook at those numbers again because they just a bunch more events today. So we'll take
With the aquatic center and the parks and rec and then also miscellaneous. What's under there is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's a big number. What is, what do you consider? What's considered under miscellaneous for you right now, under this budget?
Oh, that is truly miscellaneous. That comes from a variety of sources. And this one is made up of, if you look on the page eleven at the bottom, it says it's revenues. So a hundred thousand of that is reimbursements for overtime for police department. And then the other seventy thousand is truly miscellaneous stuff. It is small amounts for refunds from
Is that the ones where we get money from Virginia tech events and things like that? Is that correct?
No, no.
No, so the police officers, when they go over there, I know we get
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes. That hundred thousand, that's what that is, is when send officers over to tech, tech pays us for their time and we pay the officers. So yeah, it's kind of a
Okay, so that is still maybe, yes, maybe not depending on how the pandemic thing goes. And then law enforcement funds, three and a half million dollars. Do you still think that we're going to get the money and who gives us the money? The state?
Money comes from the state.
Okay, so that should be good, right? And then next page, not on page eight. Well, actually, no, that's not, sorry, page nine.
Okay.
The machine and tools current tax, three hundred thousand dollars, penalties of all property taxes, interest of all property taxes, consumer utility tax, contracting retail sales. I mean, retail sales, do you still think we're going to get one and a half million dollars in this budget?
We we are going to have, we've already had nine good months of this year. And we are going to have hopefully nine good months out of next year. So it's not going to disappear entirely, but those numbers have been reduced.
I do think that a lot of people, the last thing that they want to do after this pandemic is going shopping for clothing or anything else.
As far as retail sales, that includes our restaurants.
Yeah. Motor vehicle licenses, that's a lot. Motor vehicle licenses, that's a lot. The bank franchises, taxes. Page eleven. That one, I have a lot of questions right there. The rental of general property. Why do we have that in there, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Why are we renting?
A good portion of that money comes from the rental payments that we get for cell towers that are.
Okay, that was the number that you gave me before. Okay.
Right.
And then the rental P and R properties, what is that?
Rental of Parks and Rec properties.
Okay, got it. All right. So you still think that all these fees and contributions we're still going to get from under the parks and rec, correct? Programs, the sponsorships, the adult athletics, the youth athletics, all the stuff, right?
Yeah, we're going to revisit those numbers, but I, I feel pretty comfortable that you know, they may come down a little bit. I don't think it's going to be a huge number, because I do think we will still have nine months of good activity next year. And you know, that's partly why we, you know, want to revisit some of the stuff in the fall is to just see where does everything really shake out? Does the economy recover as quickly as we think it will? And then we're being as conservative as we can in terms of expenditures and not spending money that we don't need to spend.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, even on page twelve, when we're talking about motor vehicle carriers and all that stuff. A million, seven hundred thousand dollars in here in the budget saying that we're going to make. When in reality, I don't think that too many people are looking into buying cars. I cannot really tell you. I sell houses and that industries are really pretty, shutting down pretty quickly too, unfortunately.
Well, that's a motor vehicle carrier tax that comes to us from the state.
That one comes from the state.
Money that we generate, we just receive the payments from the state. So we don't have a lot to go on in forecasting those numbers and don't really foresee them dropping very much.
Oh, okay, okay. Now, the, under the special revenue funds, page number thirteen.
Yes.
The anti-drug federal, anti-drug state selective enforcement DUI. And then Montgomery County, no, the DEA task force. Do you think that we're still going to get the money? Is that for sure? Do we have contracts with the state about that? Or do those numbers fluctuate?
Yeah, we have continuing ongoing contracts with the state for the selective enforcement. The DEA task force money, that's kind of been a set amount every year for the last four or five years. We haven't heard anything that that is going to stop. No communication in that regard. It's kind of a reimbursement for one of our detectives that, that works on that task force for his overtime. So if that funding were to go away, then we also wouldn't do the overtime and wouldn't incur the cost.
All right, and then under page fourteen, he's talking about over here penalties, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Are we still, I know that we have frozen, we're not charging people for cutting off fees right now. Are we still wanting to collect a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from the population of Christiansburg right now for? Well, restoration water fees is also fifty thousand dollars. Turn on fees is twenty thousand dollars.
Next year's.
Look at this month to month basis, because if this pandemic continues to go on. I don't think we should be collecting any restoration water fees, turn on water fees or water connection fees. I mean, right there, we're talking about almost two hundred thousand dollars in fees from the town citizen in the middle of a pandemic. Now, next page, page fifteen. Why do we have in there the community development, five hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and ten? What is that about?
That is on page twenty. There's a breakdown of that.
Okay, let's see. All right, so I have a problem with this one. The airport. We are wanting to give another ten thousand dollars to the airport. These numbers, um. Let me just see here really quick. So we're giving them an additional call at ten thousand dollars. Is this still in the budget for this Virginia Tech airport? They, but they got over one million dollars last year in grants. Did our aquatic center get a call up from Virginia Tech or Raff for this year? No, we did not. According from them, they benefit from us having the aquatic center. No extra ten thousand dollars to Virginia Tech. If you cannot give extra money to a food pantry. Then our runway is sufficient enough right now to get the needed, those needed testing kits. I don't, I don't actually remember having that discussion. Every, everybody didn't comment on the ten thousand dollars additional to the Virginia Tech airport, making it sixty thousand dollars a year during a pandemic. Who may you put in the budget? Valerie, that increase.
We always, we always put in the budget what is requested from the various different organizations. These are all organizations that we are members of. So each year they provide us with a lot of requesting the amount of support that they need for that year. And then it always goes to council to make that decision.
Well, the only thing I heard was from Stipes asking for ten thousand dollars, which that's kind of for the rich people right now, because as far as, I know the majority of people over here in Christiansburg don't ride that air those airports, that they don't use that airport over there. The same thing goes with the regional airport. They are not located in the town of Christiansburg. I still think that we do not have to participate in that and not be part of that, but ten thousand dollars shouldn't be added to the budget right now during this pandemic either. We're not getting the call up from, from those organizations. Virginia Tech has money. The farmers market is talking about over here, ten thousand, a hundred and twenty dollars. What is that ten thousand dollars for? Why are we going to spend ten thousand dollars on a farmer's market?
For the operations of the farmer's market. We do plan on continuing with the farmer's market. We will probably change the way we operate it. We are talking about doing a potential drive-through farmer's market this year. But that's what I think most of the farmer's markets are looking at in this area is to try to do some type of drive-through farmer's market. But we plan on having it.
Well, even the governor considered the farmer's market is not essential right now. Here we are putting on the budget, ten thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty dollars in farmer's market. That doesn't include, so we did not hired an events coordinator, right? And now you did, go ahead.
Correct.
But you still gave a part-time position, you made it to full-time for another person from the rec department to be on the events coordination right now. So if we were to have a farmer's market, that person will take over, right?
They would handle it if we didn't hire the, the events coordinator. That's correct.
Okay, which it wouldn't take thirty five thousand dollars position, and I know there are probably ten thousand dollars additional to that person that we're going to be paying every year. And you're talking about ten thousand dollars. So this farmer's market may be costing the town taxpayers money fifty thousand dollars a year, correct?
Well, that, that's if you assume that the events coordinator only manages the farmer's market, but they do, they do far beyond that.
Well, if you were going to hire, which it was the last talks in the last meetings. It was going to be for the farmer's market, and obviously the other one was going to help out with additional events. So we're talking about fifty thousand dollars for a farmer's market. I, I don't think, I think the farmer's market needs to be taken out of this budget right now and reconsidering later on, since we're not going to be able to have a farmer's market this year.
Well, we don't know that for sure. We're still planning on having.
We're closed down until June the tenth, Mr. Barber. And the governor said today it may go on until later in the fall. So.
Well, if that's so, then that's that much less money we'd be spending on the farmer's market.
Well, that's why I said we should actually not be putting in the budget right now and maybe have a discussion about bringing it out later on.
You know, because it's in a budget item, does not necessarily mean we will spend the entire amount. We'd have to spend based on the time of operation. Budget is what you set aside, a budget is what you set aside for. Don't always have to use it.
The parks and recreation and the aquatic center right here, it's still costing. So right now you have estimated that it's still costing us about the same money. Like before, even though they are not running right now, and you don't have all the part timers and it's not costing us. Why is it, why aren't these numbers lower, Valerie?
At the time, and we still don't know when it's going to reopen and how much savings. We're still working some of our part-time people to do cleaning. And if it opens July one, then we would need the full staffing and the full budget that we would and did it any other time. I mean, right now, we don't know if that's the case or not. If they're not paying people, if they're not paying staff, then that will be money saved. And it will just increase what we have available for our expenditures next year, depending on what the revenues do.
Okay, well, and I guess like, once again, the last page. The NRV Regional Airport, sixty thousand dollars, that's just, I mean, that's twenty two thousand dollars in the Virginia Tech Airport, sixty thousand dollars. I want to see where they request the dollar, ten thousand dollars from us after they just got a grant for a million dollars from the state. I, I don't think we should have put it in there without even asking the other town council members, so at least I didn't get the memo. And then the tourism office too, getting a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars when they have gotten a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy-three. I think, is that something that we can always regulate and make it lowered or not give it to the tourism office? We don't have to have tourism right now. There is nothing going on right now. If you want to do tourism later on, when everything else opens up. We can pay the money and make odds and, and do everything like West Virginia's doing. I mean, West Virginia is doing all the advertisement on Facebook and everything else. They were getting, they were doing really good trying to get people from all over the states and other places to come and visit them, instead of spending the money the way we're spending it right here, so people can go and travel and bring us videos from Virginia Beach.
Well, those funds are an agreed upon amount. It is eighty-five percent of the one percent that we collect in lodging tax.
Is that a contract that says we have to pay the money every year?
Yes.
Agreement with Montgomery County and Blacksburg.
Well, Montgomery County is only paying twenty thousand dollars and they're getting the majority of the money.
They're, they're paying the same, they're, they're paying one percent of their lodging tax towards that.
How much does Montgomery pay for the tourism office?
They can do the same thing as we do. It's eighty-five percent of one percent of what we collect.
So they are making, so the tourism office here in Christiansburg. Are they making, they're making a hundred and thirteen, well, they were making a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars plus another a hundred another, how do they divide the Montgomery County tourism money?
But based on receipts from lodging taxes.
I know, what I'm talking about is to who do they give the money to? Because right now this year, the tourism office over here, I mean, I don't really see them doing anything for our real businesses. I mean, you've got the Starlight that is going under because we ended up suing them two years ago. And then right now, that she can barely make it. Right now, she cannot even open her place right now for, for movies. And here you are, spending a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars a year in an organization instead of actually encouraging people that have touristic destinations yet in the town. The only touristic destinations we're really having the town, what are they? If you want to invest money invested in the Starlight, invest in the Christiansburg Institute or things that are going to bring people to the community. And that's saved for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, could I add something there?
Really good job.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Staff, Stipes.
I think the staff has council's opinion on these things. Do you have enough to go on to the next meeting till April twenty first?
I, I believe I do. What, what I've heard is remove the increases for employee compensation. And we'll reconsider those in the fall as a potential budget amendment. Although I will research the VRS multiplier to make sure that there's not a deadline of July first, and I'll let you know that this week. I think I heard a majority of council say add the eight hundred thousand in for paving. And I believe those are really the only changes that I heard a majority of council voice approval for.
That sounds good. I'd recommend we reconvene on April twenty first and go to the next level of detail.
I think I also heard to freeze the water rate.
Yeah, well, that, that's included in the, the current draft though.
Yes, it is.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, a couple of quick thoughts. I am I noticed that, I understand that the thought process on the salary increases and merit increases and everything else. But the last statement of that paragraph said they would not be even, even be considered until October. So they could be budgeted now. Is that correct? Because none of it's going to take place until October.
That's correct.
Would take a council action to go ahead with those.
We, we did propose that we would take those to.
I would like to.
Before we allocate those.
But you cannot plan for the milk without the cow, Mr. Barber.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hicks. Ms. Hicks, this is my time to talk. Thank you. This is my time. Thank you.
Well, you stopped me before.
I mean, I'd like to see them in. I would like to see them included if possible. Again, this is a council decision. It's going to take a majority of council to pass this overall budget. And whether it includes fifty thousand or sixty thousand dollars for an airport. That's up to council, the majority of council to decide. So the funds were, were requested. Under the community grants, I'm a little disappointed that we are not going to fund the museum. Because I think certainly it's been going for, along forever. We have, we have supported it for as long as I've been on council. And without some type of funding from us, they could very well go under. So.
Everybody's going under right now.
Well, I understand, but once this thing recovers, and it will recover. Our citizens are still going to need access to the things like the library. They need the cultural experiences that, that the museum, the historical facts that the museum has out there for them. So I would like to at some point discuss the possibility of, of some type of funding for them. Does it have to be the full twenty? Not necessarily, but I think something that would help them weather the storm until they can get back on their feet. So with that, I'm done. There's nothing else. I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.